Welcome to the December 21st meeting of the Mobile City Planning Commission. I would like to take a moment to review our general operating procedures. Our meeting is divided into two sessions, the public hearing session and the deliberation session. In the public hearing session, an application or group application on the agenda is called. The applicant makes his or her presentation. Commission members ask questions if any. Members of the public make their comments. Only four people may speak for an agenda item project and four against. Each speaker is limited to five minutes, subject to questions by the commission. After four minutes, a loud beep will indicate one minute left to speak, and at this point, please summarize your comments. After all opposition speakers have finished, the applicant will be given time to respond. If you do intend to speak, please come to the podium, speak into the microphone, and give your name and address for our minutes. Please direct all comments to the commission only and not to the applicant or the audience, and please remember to speak directly into the microphone. On routine applications, the applicant may simply raise his or her hand if there are no objections to the staff recommendations. I will then announce that the applicant is in full agreement with those recommendations. If there are any questions, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. After hearing all applications, the commission will go into deliberation session. In the deliberation session, the commissioners discuss each application with input from the staff as necessary, but with no input from the audience. The commissioners then vote on each application, and the results of voting can be learned from the planning department. If some issue arise in the deliberation session that were not addressed in the public hearing, the chairman has the discretion either to allow additional comments pertaining to those issues in order to resolve them, or call for the application to be held over for discussion at a future meeting. Occasionally, one or more commission members may recuse themselves from discussing and voting on a given application. A recusal does not necessarily mean the member is directly involved with the application or the applicant. Depending upon the circumstances, ethical rules may require a recusal when there is only the slightest appearance of a conflict of interest. If a regular member recuses, a supernumerary will vote in their stead unless both supernumeraries are already voting due to absences. The planning commission makes final decisions, subject to appeal, on subdivisions, planning approvals, and plan unit developments, PUDs. The planning commission only makes recommendations on zoning applications, with the city council making the final decision. Please turn off or silence all cell phones at this time. Commissioners and staff, please remember to turn on your microphones when speaking. Roll call. Ms. Libby Latham.
Here.
Mr. John Ballas.
Here.
Mr. Thomas Doyle.
Here.
Mr. Taylor Atchison.
Here.
Ms. Kena Andrews.
Here.
Mr. Nick Amberger.
Here.
And myself. We have a quorum. We'll begin with our holdovers. Item number one, 2001 Springfield Avenue and 137, 139, and 49 Tuscaloosa Street, recommended for tentative approval for both the subdivision and the PUD. Is the applicant present? Are you agree with staff recommendations? Applicant has shown that they are present and in agreement with staff recommendations. Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against?
What application are you talking about right now?
Number one.
Okay. Am I going to have a...
If you're against, he just has to come on.
I'm against.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Dorothy I. Wells. I have lived at 134 Florence Place for the last forty years. I object to this 137 Tuscaloosa Street, Mobia, Alabama, application to have a new off-site parking lot. My whole backyard abuts 137 Tuscaloosa Street, and I do not want a parking lot at the end of my driveway, in my backyard. And I also, the reason why I object to this is because there is strange problem anyway, and having a concrete parking lot would create severe flooding in my yard. And I don't like the noise, and also health and safety issues, and depreciation of my home. There was distributed to each of you by Lisa, our records indicate that the abutting property owners were not notified in 1990. Now, the reason why I bring this up is because that's when Carol O. Wilkerson applied for a rezoning from an R1 to a B1. The application that I have, that I've gotten from the planning commission, is not complete. None of the abutting property owners were notified, and this is validated through Lisa Lambert's letter that each of you should have. And this, my request, has been forwarded to the mayor's office, at which time the city attorneys are investigating this right now. I also want to mention that if the application by Carol Wilkerson was incomplete, and she signed it validating that everything was correct, that makes it invalid. And furthermore, there is an ordinance that Richard L. Smith, the city clerk, has signed in 1990. And that makes this ordinance, this 1990 ordinance, when Tuscalo, 137 Tuscaloosa Street became a B2, he signed off on that. So therefore, that document is illegal because the applicant was illegal. I want to ask a question. Isn't it true that all property owners, that abutting an applicant, an application such as 137 Tuscaloosa Street, 1990, each one of those are supposed to receive notices? Isn't that correct?
I will refer to staff. The zoning ordinance requires that the notifications be sent prior to the planning commission public hearing. There is no requirement, or back in 1990, there was no requirement for the city council to send individual notices. Their notice was via a legal advertisement in the newspaper.
I have something right here. It mentions, and I have a copy right here, number sixteen. And this is from the application from Carol O. Wilkerson, came to 137 Tuscaloosa Street. Number sixteen lists all the names and addresses of owners of property lying within the distance of three hundred feet of the property in this application, as shown by the latest assessment records. There's no names of anyone that had gotten notices. So why is that paragraph right there?
That is the application to the planning commission for rezoning. It is not uncommon for an applicant, instead of listing them on the application, to attach them, and from what I saw... Could I see that for just a moment?
Sure. It says attachment, and the only one's attached is Carol O. Wilkerson, a letter that was sent to her. She's the only one who has gotten notices. And Lisa Lambert mentioned that none of the abutting property owners were notified in 1990.
Again, Ms. Lambert's letter is referring to the city council public hearing. The city council at that time, and I'm not sure they even do now, they did not send out written notices to individual property owners because that was not a requirement. Their notification was via a legal ad in the newspaper.
I don't get the newspaper. I never did get the newspaper. So why is this sentence right here? But it's been sent to the legal department.
Doug, in the legal aspect of argument...
Can I have it in writing where it said that they did not send out notices? Is that possible?
Based on all of our information, the city complied with all legal requirements of notification back in 1990.
Is that even an issue at this point?
I don't hear that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak against this? Thank you. Moving on to item number two. 9601 Three Notch Crona Road, recommended for tentative approval. Is the applicant present?
Craig Erdman with Erdman Surveying. The owner would like to have it held over to the January 18th meeting, if possible. She is further subdividing Lot 1 up there.
Should I get held over till when?
Till January 18th meeting. The next one's January 4th. I don't think anything's going to get done between here and there with the holidays.
All right. Does there any, foresee any problem with that? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The applicant has requested this be held over till January 18th. It will most likely be granted. However, anyone who wishes to speak for or against this does have that right at this time, but you will also have that right when the applicant is formally, application is formally heard. Thank you. Item number three is to be withdrawn. Item number four, that the record show that Ms. Latham is recused.
Mr. Chairman, it's just the staff recommendation that it be withdrawn.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The application is not actually being withdrawn.
All right. Item number three, west side of Solly Road at the west terminus of Warrington Drive.
Millard Austin, Austin Engineering. It was my understanding that there was a mix-up in the dates for, to provide the new information, and I thought the staff was going to withdraw that recommendation, that it be withdrawn.
Well, the staff report was complete by the time you submitted the revisions that were required, so we couldn't revise it based on that. But we do have proposed conditions for approval, which I can give you a copy of that.
Once the reports have been published, the commission has told us in the past to not revise the actual report recommendation, but have, if we have some new information presented to them at the meeting. So we could not, as Mr. Hoffman said, change it prior to today.
We agree with the recommendations.
As the record show, that the applicant agrees with the staff's proposed conditions of approval. Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Item number four, 114 Austell Avenue, subdivision and PUD. Both items are recommended for approval, subject to staff recommendations.
And Mr. Chairman, please note, you do have revised recommendations placed in your, loosely placed in your books.
Yes, sir. And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, the reason for that is there were some lot numbers in traffic engineering comments and other comments that referred to the old numbering of the lots, and with revised plat, the numbers changed, so we had to change those lot numbers.
And Brett O'Reilly with Poly Surveying. I want to first and foremost apologize to the staff and commission for that happening. It slipped by me. My draftsman just changed it without me knowing. So, yeah, item number five is the main thing that has changed. I got with Mary Beth on Tuesday and staff, and they were able to make those changes for us. So, this is consistent with our conversation back and forth. We're in agreement with all recommendations. The only recommendation we would look to amend briefly, these have changed. Make sure. The only recommendation from traffic under number five, we would ask to be amended, was that lots five and six are, and five, six, and one are shown to have a shared curb cut. As you can see on the plat above you, Lot number one is the largest, this is the estate lot where the home is located. There previously, or currently, is actually a detached garage that is going to be removed, and that was part of the PUD. But can see that in the future, you know, someone who buys this property or decides to live there, maybe adds on a new structure, would want to have a curb cut for a detached garage. I think it only makes sense. It's got the most frontage available, you know, meets all the requirements. So I just ask that that be amended, that Lot 1 be removed from having to share a curb cut and actually be granted one. Outside of that, we are in agreement with all the other staff recommendations. I would like to, on the last meeting, we were asked to get with engineering on, to look at drainage. And I met with both Mr. Amberger and George on that. We also met with Captain Allen, because Fire was a part of that. George and Captain Allen and I met. We talked through everything. We feel that we have now addressed the concerns from the drainage aspect here. Captain Allen asked that we amend the PUD to show the easement, basically connecting from Austell Avenue over to Austell Place, and widen the existing drive to twelve-foot wide. So we have done that, reflected that on our PUD, so we believe we've satisfied both engineering and Fire's comments at this time. And I'll take any other questions as I may.
Brett, I'd like to know, in the sizing of the common areas for the detention, did y'all actually crunch some numbers to make certain that they're capable?
Using LIDAR and what was available to us, we did run, based on the hundred-year, two-year storm event, that was Vince and Bethland Engineering helped us with that. And so, we did run through those numbers. We believe we put adequate easements to then basically detain the site. We're going to be running some swells down and hopefully look to improve the current situation that maybe some of the neighbors mentioned in the previous meeting. So, you know, that would be done prior to plating of these lots.
But when you get to your formal design, we want to make sure your engineer also doesn't design just a point discharge. We want to make sure that, you know, especially that long linear common area, that it mimics the original sheet flow as much as possible.
Right, right.
Just work with George on that.
Yeah, absolutely. And that was discussed, that we would try to have our engineer work with, and they worked with together quite a bit, so.
Does traffic or staff have issue with the added curb cut?
Based on my conversation with Mr. O'Reilly, the lot in question, Lot 1, does have right-of-way that mimics a single-family home, so it's not without reason to think that it could have one lot, or one curb cut, and the other two still would need to share.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the shared curb cut information is not only in condition number five, but it's also in the traffic engineering comments, which is number eight, and the PUD traffic engineering comments, number two. So we'll need to amend those if the commission chooses to grant that request. So we'll make sure that when the letters are done, all of those where curb cuts are mentioned have the same verbiage.
Okay, thank you.
Richard, did the revised comments address the Fire's concern?
I believe they did. They, I believe they did. If we got the comments from Fire, they were included in these.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone for?
I want some additional information to make the decision whether to go against it.
Okay. Anyone here, well, calm down, sir. Anyone in here neutral?
My name is John Strom, 212 Carmel Drive East, Mobile, Alabama. I backed up to the common area, number two, and my concerns are the use of this common area. Has, are there any restrictions to the use of this common area? Can it be set up as a park for the subdivision, or can it be used as some other functions besides just the drainage?
As long as it falls within residential use and amenity for the subdivision, it could be a small park or something of that effect, provided there's enough area to accommodate that and the drainage. The main thing is that the drainage be accommodated.
So in other words, there could be a playground outside my door, fifteen feet outside my door.
Mrs. Strom, I don't, based on what I heard from the engineer, based on their calculations, they anticipate that area being used for retention. Is that, as I understood it?
Yes, sir, that's correct. It's part of the plan for the detention. So I know that's the main function.
And all of the retention ponds that I'm aware of in the city of Mobile, there's none that are used for any other secondary activity.
Okay, so I can, of course, there'll be no legal termination, terms in the contract or anything to prevent that in the future. In other words, we're at the mercy of the homeowners association of what they do with it.
I guess unless the applicant self-restricted it in some way, but most of the time, these things are ponds that are just intended to control water, and all they do is keep them maintained, keep the grass cut and keep them maintained. Generally, I don't think would encourage their children to go down and play in an area like that, you know, or even next to it.
Right. Otherwise, there will be people cramping up my driveway, going to that play area and so forth, and that would put a liability upon me. So that's why I would object to that, if they have the right to have a playground or hold functions there other than be used as a water retention.
Nick, are common areas required to be fenced, or they're not?
No, they're not.
They're not?
Okay.
The other item I have is the drives to allow emergency vehicles to enter the area to fight fires and other emergencies. I noticed on the plat that I received off the internet yesterday, that it shows that this driveway would be on private property, and who would maintain that drive to be sure cars are not parked on the drive during the day and that sort of thing. Would that be the responsibility of the homeowners?
It'd be a per...
Yes, private driveway.
Yep.
Right, so cars could be parked on the driveway at some time and prevent fire engines to reaching the house right behind me. Okay. Now, that again is a concern to me. Another, the next item is about the drainage ponds. Is there any way the engineer can supply me with the area that will be actually the holding pond? It's not indicated on this plat.
That serves what the common areas depict. I mean, the common areas are typically the holding ponds.
Right.
To fit inside of that, to fit inside of that, those defined parcels.
Okay. And I guess my other concern, in reading the documents, it gives an indication about Lot 1 and 2, about the release rate, but it doesn't mention 4, 5, and 6. Would their release rate be regulated the same as Lot 1 and 2?
Yes, anything should be reflective of the entire development, not just the individual lots.
Okay, well, I couldn't understand why it specifically mentioned Lot 1 and 2 and failed to mention Lot 4, 5, and 6.
Yeah, that should be reflecting all the lots.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, if I could pipe in there, yeah, I didn't realize that, if I'm looking at the right one, comment, is that comment K?
Yes.
It states here that Lot 1 and 2 must provide detention for the hundred-year, two-year, and really, that should be lots 1 through 6.
Okay, I'd like for that to be added then, for my protection.
Thank you, thank you, sir, for bringing that up.
I have no other comments then. I would like, if possible, whoever the developer is, to supply me with the requirements of the homeowners association and the use of that property. Right now, I have no legal grounds to object if they do make that into a playground, and it would affect the value of my property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does the owner have any comments?
I know this isn't typical, but I will respond to the pond and the common area directly. So, we actually took it a little further, Nick. We submitted to George basically preliminary design. The intent of that was to present to the commission and planning that pond design itself. So there, we submitted seven copies of that. I know it had been reviewed by George. We brought that to that meeting. The ponds take up the majority, I'd say ninety-eight percent of this property. In terms of what the future homeowners do, you know, we have, I have no comment on that. I have no idea, but this is going to be used for detention. That's the intent there. One thing we did as part of that design, I failed to mention earlier, in terms of each lot, we, I noted it in my letter, that we assumed seventy percent of coverage of the entire site for each lot, for pre and post, and so that's what the design criteria was based on.
Yeah, you said seventy percent.
Seventy percent, yes, which is a very large amount. Hopefully, that clarifies some of the concerns.
Thank you. Is anyone else here to speak?
BJ Lyon, Lyon Law Firm, 3601 Springfield Business Park Drive, Suite 102. I was here the previous time on behalf of some neighbors who abut this property. This is, this property on the plat, on the tax plat map shows three separate parcels. In 2007, it was, a subdivision was approved for four lots, but the plat was never recorded. None of my clients, who are the neighbors and who have estate lots in effect, object to, objected to that four-lot subdivision back then and wouldn't now. Our objection is that we believe that six lots is simply too many. And in the future, I think you can expect someone to come down here some years in the future and attempt to subdivide Lot 1 into 2, so you'll end up with seven lots. The, we really don't understand, this is not a family subdivision, so we don't understand why Lot 5 is given a flag lot status. If it wasn't, then you would have five lots, and I'm not sure that my clients would object to five lots, but six lots is entirely too many, particularly Lot 2, which is irregular, out-of-character slopes heavily to the east, and it's going to require a serious retention. serious retaining wall. And I don't understand why lots, why dual access is given for lots six, five, and one to both streets. Maybe I'm wrong here, let's see, six, five, and one are given one shared curb cut to Oster Place, which is to the north, and five, one, three, and four are limited to one shared curb cut to Oster Avenue, so, so lot one has dual access. And from what I heard this morning, the request to give Oster, lot one its own curb cut to Oster Place, am I correct, Rick, that that would result in three separate curb cuts to Oster Place? One for two, one for one, and one for six and five? Okay. Oster Place is a tight little street, and that's too many curb cuts, number one. Number two, I really don't understand the justification for giving lot five dual access as is lot one. Lot five is a flag lot to the north, and I don't really understand why it needs access to, to Oster Place if it's got access to Oster Avenue, but this, the family has, of course, this property is bought in the eighteen hundreds, and you've had sell-offs around it, and so, so the waiver to allow a flag lot, because this particular lot five doesn't front on a public street, is simply a self-created condition by the prior sell-off. And so, and there's a waiver to allow a irregularly shaped lot, which would be lot two. So we submit that, you know, this commission should consider that and deny that waiver. I think it's completely out of character, number one. To justify it based on flag lot or two on Old Shell Road is completely different. This is in the middle of a, of a subdivision, as you can see, and the lot to the northeast is, is an estate lot, which is going to be abutted by this irregular lot number two. So these lots are quite small. In any event, the neighbors simply object on the basis that there'd be too many houses, too many families crowded in the property, the density's out of character with the existing neighborhood, and four lots or even five lots of equivalent size may be acceptable, but it, it would appear that the planning commission should impose a condition that lot one cannot be re-subdivided. That would protect these adjacent owners in the future from whatever lots you all approve being, being changed to an additional lot. So we'll either, as it is, it'll be seven. If you, if you went to five, it would then become six. If it were four, then it would become five, and there should be a restriction or some sort of prohibition on re-subdividing lot one. Thank you.
Any questions, comments by commissioners? Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff McGowan, homeowner at one Oster Place on the northern side of this property. First, I want to thank the commission and all for working to address some of our concerns expressed last time with the drainage runoff issues and the curb cuts. Moving forward on the curb cut, certainly think it's, as drawn, you have to have a curb cut for lot two. Requesting today a change for another curb cut for what is now lot one. Again, back to the problems before, it's not that long a stretch of road. To have more curb cuts in that section decreases value, makes it crowded in the area. The detached garage that exists and has existed as long as I've been there, which is over twenty years, is detached, but it has no direct access to the road now. It is not a garage that's accessed directly from the road, so they're asking for the ability to do something that has never existed that conceivably could exist at some point, but to the detriment of the remaining properties. My other major issue or concern is just the type of properties in existence and their consistency with the properties surrounding. As stated by Ms. Lyons, I was one of the neighbors. None of us had any issues with the sub-development. We're not against development. We were okay with Ms. Oster developing four lots ten years ago, and the commission agreed with that, and it just didn't happen. This is fifty percent more lots, at least now with the drainage areas, the lots are even smaller than, than drawn. The flag lot question, and the original proposal references two flag lots. If you look at those, those are single lots developed into both of which access Old Shell Road, and I don't think there's any reason to compare Old Shell Road to Oster Avenue that I believe has about nine residences, and Oster Place that has about five. So, flag lots are a different type of animal in this, in this scenario to me. On Oster Place, our development has covenants which were placed fifty years ago when the development was happened by the Oster family, signed by Ms. Oster herself, actually. So, it has limits on house size, minimum footage, the number of pets you can have, all sorts of things, none of which, of course, are addressed at this point with this development. So we have some concern of the type of development that could result from smaller lots in a smaller area being consistent with our neighborhood. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir. Any response?
Hello, my name's Mimi Lyons-Bell. I'm at 107 Carmel Drive East. I wrote about this, and I know that I sent to the commission, and I have concerns regarding the traffic that will be added, not only just with the subdivision being divided into so many lots, but also in the development. As I live at the corner of Carmel and Bexley, Bexley Lane, which is a lane and not maintained, is the cut through to get to the only light that you enter and exit out of the neighborhood. It's already needing help. I mean, I have, you know, there's pots and there's holes, and I just am concerned about that. Not only that, but the pedestrian traffic, there's a lot that goes up and down that road, and it's, it's very, it's a hill, it's very dangerous. Local traffic kind of knows to take it slow, but I've already seen there have been wrecks, a lot of wrecks there, and I'm concerned about that going forward. I don't know how you address that, or if, if there's a no-through traffic sign, or, but I just did wanted of record and note that I find this a danger to our residents within that, specifically that area, living there and walk and enjoy that road. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the owner have any comment? Thank you. Move to item number five. Yeah, yeah. Item number four. I'm on four, if he's coming, I'm on five if he's not.
I thought the owner's legal representation was going to speak, that's why. I apologize. I just want to quickly point out, Mr. Olson, you might go into this slide that shows the parcels, a little bit the one back. The main thing I just want to talk about is the, the flag lot question. You can see clearly the lot on Old Shell, can we get a pointer on that particular lot? In the past, every application we've ever submitted, it was actually stated about three meetings ago, that staff looks at irregular shaped lots within, I believe up to half a mile was the term used. This is within three hundred and fifty feet. I've had one approved by this commission less than eight months ago with lots a lot further away in terms of flag lots. So, I just want to specifically address that. I believe it is consistent with the area, and, and we ask it to be submitted along with that one amendment to the lot one having a curb cut for future use, since it's the, has the most frontage in this development. So, we feel like we've done everything we can that the commission asked us to do last time with the fire department and the city engineering department in terms of drainage and access, so we ask it to be approved.
Okay, thank you. Questions by commissioners? Okay, item number five. New subdivision applications, thirty-five, thirty-five, thirty-five Spring Hill Avenues recommended for tentative approval.
Jerry Byrd, Burt Surveying Company, 2609 Hall's Mill Road for the owner. Condition number four. That is revision of the plat to illustrate twelve-foot metal in the building setback. This property has an unopened street right-of-way on the west side of it, runs from Irene Street to Spring Hill Avenue. It's being used as a drainage easement. As you can see on the plat, there's concrete ditch in most of it. I guess there's a pipe maybe from Irene Street. But we would like to build, be able to build within eight feet of that property line, not twelve. Now, we've got to go to the board of adjustment anyway. Recommendation is to go to board of adjustment to even get it to twelve. Would like that condition rewritten to be able to get within eight feet of that, and it's not going to be a problem with the next-door neighbors. Those lots back up to the other side of that thirty-three feet. So in essence, there's forty-one feet to the next property line, and they have no setback inside of their line, so eight foot, they could build within eight feet of that same street right-of-way. That subdivision was approved and recorded in nineteen ninety-two. But we'd just like to reword it to where we could go down to eight feet if the board of adjustment approves it.
With my city engineer cap on, I would like to recommend that you build as far away from that ditch as possible. The city actually has a planned project upstream and adjacent to that property, and so we would certainly encourage you or anybody that was developing on that lot to get as far away from that ditch as possible. Those, those properties that you've mentioned that abut up to it on Providence Court, and some of the large residents, their backyards actually flood, so I know we're, I guess the, the staff is recommending twelve feet, but knowing what I know about it, I would tell you to get twenty-two feet away from it.
And, and the city's going to work on that area?
Well, we're working on, we're working on an upstream project to stabilize the ditch as it goes through, through another, another parcel of land, but we're not doing anything to upsize that ditch right there. Every bit of probably one quarter of the water that comes off Spring Hill drains through that ditch. So starting up almost at St. Paul's on Old Shell Road, that whole quarter of the hill drains through this point. So, I know the property does come up pretty, pretty abruptly, but it's, it's an area that it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when we'll get back into that ditch and have to rebuild it or widening it, widening it or improve it. So, I'm not going to be inclined to support any closer, closer setbacks into that ditch.
Well, city could rebuild or improve going westwardly using the other side of that thirty-three foot, could not.
The, the ditches like this in the city, if I could weigh the magic wine, we'd have a hundred feet on either side of them. You know, it's just, these are big, major ditches that carry a lot of water, and it's, it's not a problem until it rains, but when it rains, these residents have a lot of, lot of issues, and they end up in, you know, either with their council representative or in my office to address it, and real estate's always the problem. You know, that's always the problem of being able to adequately solve, solve their concerns.
Yeah. Well, we still would like the opportunity to go to aid if we needed to, but, understand your concerns, and he, the owner can then address how far away from that he needs to build. He's lived, he lives there now, owns both lots. I guess he's seen the water that comes through there.
Yeah, I'm trying to fix the water that comes through there, and I've, I've seen it from a different perspective, and he needs to be as far, any structure needs to be as far away as it can, you know, from that, from that ditch.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Item number six, 157 South Cedar Street, folly subdivision recommended for approval.
Jerry Byrd again. I guess I need a clarification in number two about building setbacks, ten-foot metal in the building setback, eighteen-foot maximum setback. Purpose of this subdivision is to construct a freestanding carport near the rear of the dwelling that's there. Will that be allowed?
In the DDD, because that's where the property is located, downtown development district?
Yeah.
It don't, the, those setbacks only apply to the primary structure, and it is the front setback, so it's not going to impact
Okay.
the accessory
Accessory buildings. Okay. And then also, number four, parking setback should be equal to the setback of the front facade. You're talking about car parking?
Yes, sir.
You can't park any closer than the front of the house.
Yes, sir.
Okay, it's nice, pretty, streetscape.
That's part of the DDD code.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you. Item number seven, east side of Dykes Road, north Carlisle Place subdivision, is recommended for tentative approval. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with staff recommendations? Applicant is present and in agreement with staff recommendations. Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you. Item number eight, 956 and 958, South Broad Street, CJ Spa subdivision, recommended for approval. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with staff recommendations? Applicant is present and in agreement with staff recommendations. Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you. Item number nine, North Terminus of Georgian Drive, Georgia Place subdivision, recommended for approval. Are you in agreement with staff recommendations? Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone to speak against? Thank you. New planning approval applications. Item number ten, 200 Dolphin Street, recommended for approval. Applicant present? Are you in agreement with staff recommendations? Applicant is present and in agreement. Is there anyone here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you. Item number eleven, under new plan unit development applications, 4725 Moffett Road, is recommended for tentative approval. Applicant present? I didn't see you. Is there anyone here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you. New group applications. New group applications. Item number twelve, area bounded by Foxtail Drive, Lace Bark Drive and White Bark Drive. The subdivision, PUD, both recommended for approval. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with staff recommendations? Applicant is present and in agreement. Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against?
I'm Don Wilkins with Colwell Banker Charles Hayes Real Estate. Office is located at eleven twenty Hillcrest Road, Mobile. I represent John Harris in the sale of his property that adjoins this development to the west of the development. He has a five-acre parcel there that is currently landlocked. D.O. Horton has a development, or there's a subdivision on the south side, south border of his property, which prohibits entry. D.O. Horton owns a property to the west of his property. There's another owner to the north of his property.
I'm sorry, Don, just, you keep going. Let's get our bearings straight on where he's at.
Yeah, I think he's here on
I'm, I'm, I'm south of there. There, there, that's the property. And, and you can see that there's a subdivision. All those are built-out lots or to be built on.
I think you're here in fourteen Longleaf Gate subdivision phase two.
This says twelve, it says Longleaf subdivision phase one.
Yeah.
Am I on the wrong one?
I, I think you're actually here for
Please, this is right here.
This one.
I may be on the wrong one then. I, I, I looked at Longleaf Gates, and that's what I, what drew my attention to it.
John Harris, I'm, he represents me. Question I have on this is about being
Could you state your name and address for the record?
Okay. John D. Harris, fifty-one eleven Briar Cliff Drive, Northport, Alabama, three-five-four-seven-three. Question I have on this is changing it to a private road. Since I'm, I'm landlocked and actually the only way I can get right now currently to my property is to come through Longleaf, and I'm worried about if they change it to a private road, they'll end up turning it into a gated community.
It currently is a private road.
Okay, that, that's, that's the question I had on it.
Yes, sir, it's currently a private road.
It is currently a private road, thank you.
Is there anyone here else here to speak against this? This particular one? Item number thirteen, six eighty Azalea Road, this is recommended for holdover. Is applicant present? You have the right to speak if you so choose, unless you're in agreement with the holdover.
My name's Steve Fisher, I'm in element three engineering, and I have talked to Rick Olson. We submitted a revised narrative the other day, which y'all have, but we've seen we have a parking issue, so we will revise our drawings and resubmit at that time.
Okay, thank you. All right. This is recommended for holdover till January eighteenth. It'll probably be granted. At such times, you will have the opportunity to speak for or against this, but you do have that opportunity now. Thank you. Item number fourteen, sixty-fifty White Bark Drive is recommended for holdover till January fourth. Is applicant present? Are you in agreement? That will probably be granted. Anyone has the opportunity to speak for or against this now, or they can wait until the next meeting when it will be heard and speak at that time, but you do have that right
Well, I'm here and it's now, so I'm back. My name is Kathy Terry, and I'm a part-owner of the adjacent landlocked properties and have been since nineteen eighty-five, but who's counting? With this particular project, when the phase-two application was submitted, I came down to look at the site plan and was told by a planner that the only difference affecting our property from the twenty-thirteen was that the emergency access only was no longer required, and it was a statewide thing that there were so many complaints, and I didn't catch which organization or municipality or whatever did that. But at any rate, it supposedly was, the norm was changed. Applicant's site plan did not contain the emergency access-only language. However, staff has recommended the addition of it in number five on page twenty-one of twenty-three of today's agenda. I spoke with the planner on Tuesday and was told that the, other than the applicant or the planning commission, you all are the only ones who could remove the emergency stipulation language. Applicants submitted their plan without it, and I would respectfully request that you reject staff's recommendation, number five, to add it back in when it's evidently standard procedure now that it's not required for that private street. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from commissioners? Anyone else here to speak for or against this? Again, it'll be, it'll be heard again on the fourth.
I'm Don Wilkins with Colwell Banker Charles Hayes Real Estate, eleven twenty Hillcrest Road, Mobile. And I do represent John Harris in the sale of his property at north, or excuse me, west of the development. That property that's highlighted is a five-acre tract. It's, it's boxed in by the development on the south. D.O. Horton has a property on the west. There's no access to it. There's no access from the northern, northern property. And the way this is designed, there's no access to the east border of the property. There is a kind of a, an access to the common area there. I don't know what that common area is, so I guess I've got a question. Is that, is that a detention pond, or is that, is that just, you know, flat common area that it can be used for recreation or playgrounds or whatever? But whatever, whatever it is, there's no access, and this property's been locked, landlocked for a while, and this would be a good opportunity to, to put a fifty-foot access road in to that property so that it could be used. Right now, the, of course, the owner cannot use it. He can't even get on the property unless he parachutes in or something like that. And I didn't, I didn't understand the, I don't think an emergency tie-in would, would be adequate because he still couldn't use his property. It would have to be a public street, and I understand from your documentation that there's, the one at, at the north, which was designated as Magpie Drive, would be for emergency use only. That would not do him any good since he couldn't access his property. And right now, he can't sell it because the title company will not issue a title policy on a landlocked property. So, right now, he's useless. The only opportunity that he has, if you, if you go ahead with the design as it's written, as it's drawn, he could possibly get an access off of Lloyd's Lane to the west. But we, we've attempted to, with D.O. Horton on several occasions, to negotiate that, and he's been unsuccessful. They've not been corresponding with us on that after numerous attempts. So, what we'd like to do, we'd, we'd like the subdivision, we'd like for it to be, to go through. D.O. Horton's a good community member, and we, we like the subdivision. There's nothing wrong with it, except it closes my cellar off permanently from the east boundary. And so, we would like to recommend that, that it be subject to, this approval be subject to giving him a fifty-foot access to his property, where he could access it and develop it in the future if he needed to. It's zoned R-three as well.
So, so at this point, Mr. Wilkins, he has absolutely no access anyway to his
He has no access anywhere at all right now, and this will permanently keep him from having access from the, from the east. I've checked it out with the title company, and, you know, they, they say it's definitely landlocked, and they will not issue a title policy for the sale of it. And he can't even, he can't even get on it unless he trespasses somebody's property. And so, we, he really need, this would be a good opportunity to, to put that back in. And as I read your brochure that you sent out, there was something in there that maybe there was at one time, a, it was designed, I think I read something about in two thousand and nine. This is on page five, fifth paragraph, it references section eight E-one-eight, does not allow private streets to serve adjacent properties, and the proposed street stub labeled Maggie Drive would be accessible by property not owned by the applicant. The two thousand and nine approval of the overall subdivision continued additional street stubs to connect adjacent public streets and landlocked properties, but now that's not, not the case. There's, it's not designed where it can access this property like it was in two thousand and nine.
I don't know if, if we have that information, but I do recall the street stubs previously, but I know the flood maps have since been updated, so it appears, you know, this common area here is probably more than likely wetlands or floodplain, and hence, that's why they're, they're not trying to maximize lot development by putting lots in that area. It may not, they may not be able to develop, so maybe at the next meeting, Prabha Resh could enlighten us on that unless you have that information.
Well, if you'll remember from last meeting, the subdivision of this property was before you, and it had to be held over because the access issue came up. The access to the, I'm sorry, if you look, the access to this property is via, was it White Briar, I believe?
White Bark.
White Bark, and that's a private street. They do not have, or at least at that meeting, did not have permission from the owner of the private street to use it for access to this, to this property. So, it had to be held over for them to have access. They had already submitted this application because of the required PED and the rezoning because it's split-zoned. So, we had to process it, and that's why we recommended holdover on this, is so it can be heard, considered in conjunction with the other. If they have not obtained access by the next meeting, then it's all moot. They, they can't subdivide it because they do not have access.
Have, have they ever had access?
To a public street? No, ma'am. Well, I mean, technically, yes, they do have access or frontage on Gerby, but on Gerby The property that's before the commission today?
No, I'm talking about Mr. Wilkins.
Oh, okay, no, I'm sorry.
Has he ever had any access?
No, ma'am.
And he was able to get clear title to it when he bought it with no access? Does that point, I mean, that's what his
That's what was your question?
My question is, he said he would not be able to sell that five acres without access to a public rec.
Correct. This gentleman's property, Mr. Terry's property, all those, the, the, the three green parcels are all landlocked. I was hired by Dr. Terry, her father, years ago to help try and get them access. The only, if you look at the very top in the northwest corner of the subject property, right there, if I remember correctly, that is available access. But they have to, there's a private condemnation, I mean, yeah, the private condemnation statute in the Code of Alabama that allows a landlocked property owner to condemn a convenient access to their property. So, yeah, I'm not sure when this comes back up, if, if we're going to have the legal right to force the subject property before you to grant them access, because this subdivision is not landlocking them. They've been landlocked for decades. Plus, this common area is all wetlands. I don't think he can build a street across it, the common area he was requesting access across. So, I, I think that they're going to have to go through the private condemnation route to get some legal access.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wilkins.
When that property to the west is developed, that has access to Lloyd's Lane?
If, yeah, if, if, if the owner of the
Right.
property between it and, between this and Lloyd's Lane, I mean, they, they can go ahead right now, even though it's undeveloped, and condemn a right-of-way. If the judge decides that it's from Lloyd's Lane and not from that north access, that's fine. Or when that property on Lloyd's is developed, if they can negotiate access with the developer, that would avoid having to go to probate court. But I would imagine they're going to have to go through condemnation process.
Thank you.
Can I add something? That Lot sixty that Mr. Anderson is talking about, we have a letter from the city engineer from like, I don't know, nineteen, I don't remember, seventy-something. It was with the papers that my dad gave. He gave us, me and the two sisters, the top ten acres, and then he and Robert Cunningham owned the bottom ten acres and split it. But the Lot sixty is a dedicated drainage, a city dedicated drainage thing, and the engineer had said that, you know, you couldn't put a street on it, that it wasn't access for us. So, that, you know, just, but no, it's been landlocked a long time. Thank you all.
I'd like to add to Mr. Valles's comments concerning the common areas. They're likely the shape that they are because of the flood maps as they exist today, but there are new flood maps that are coming out very, very soon, and so, they're not made, they're not made to the public yet, but they will be coming, coming soon, and I think it would be very appropriate for this development probably to consider a pause until those maps can be considered, because the maps as they exist today, none of the lots might, might be shown in a flood zone, but it could be developed. I mean, tomorrow, when those maps become effective, the whole entire subdivision could be. So, I, I think, I think the applicant's engineer and surveyor need to be, be aware of that and probably work with my office to have a, have a glimpse of those maps, you know, before this is really considered.
Given that information as well as the private street access information, there may have been a premature submission.
Yeah, agreed.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? That was our last one. We close public deliberation and entering into deliberation, starting with item number one, two thousand and one Spring Hill Avenue and one thirty-seven thirty-nine forty-nine Tuscaloosa Street, currently recommended for approval. Is there a motion? Filled.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, the last time this came up, we discussed lighting. My concern with walking lot next to residential is always lighting. I guess I would recommend that we require a full cutoff dark sky fixtures. I guess I would recommend that we require full cutoff dark sky fixtures. I'd like to limit the height of those. I don't know if that's within our purview to do that.
It's a planned unit development. You have much more latitude than you do with general subdivision applications, so.
Yeah. Because my concern is that even though light may not be traveling across the property line, the source, you know, people in their bedrooms seeing the, the source of the light in the fixture. So I guess I would recommend limiting the fixture height to twelve feet and requiring full cutoff dark sky fixtures if the commission agrees.
My only concern with that is safety. I mean, having a full dark parking lot after night, safety is one of the concerns people mentioned with a empty parking lot like this.
No, it'd still, it'd still be lit. It'd have to meet the requirements of the lighting. The difference being that there's no light escaping out the side of the fixture so that everybody in the residence around can see it. So it just obscures the source of the light and throws it all to the ground.
It doesn't do the halo where you see the lighting above it?
The light of above as well, yeah.
You used the word shut off.
Oh, cut off, sorry. Yeah, full cut off.
Got it. Okay.
I'll accept that and end my motion.
It properly moved and seconded. Are we ready for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number two, ninety-six oh one, three notch Kroner, recommended for holdover until January eighteenth. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item is held over till January eighteenth. Item number three, west side of Solly Road at the West Terminus of Warrington Drive.
A question for staff. Is the current master plan referred to in the revised, is that what's in this book?
No, we did not get it in time to put it into your books. We do have a hard copy here if you would like to look at it.
There's just reference to secondary access point.
On Phase Two of the master plan, it would be immediately south of Phase One, so it would also have access onto Solly Road. And then the future phases would build from that point to the west.
I'll move to approve revised conditions provided by the staff.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Are we ready for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item number four, one fourteen Oster Avenue, Miss Lathan recuses. It's recommended for tentative approval. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. I hope I'm gonna get all these comments right, all these conditions. One condition is making sure the fires comment, revised conditions are addressed with regards to ingress and egress. Revising all notes concerning curb cuts for Lot One to reflect Lot One having a curb cut, Lot Fives and Six sharing a curb cut and Lot Two having its own dedicated curb cut. And then amendment to change number seven K with regards to stormwater referencing all lots one through six and adding a condition, no future subdivision of Lot Number One to be allowed.
I'll second that.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Just note, the number of lots in here does concern me. I think some of the comments I tend to agree with. Of course, a four or five lot subdivision would be preferred, I guess, in my opinion. Did staff, I guess, consider surrounding conditions as this fitting into lot sizes? I know immediately adjacent, there's some larger lots, but if you go out a little bit further, I know it wasn't noted, noted in the notes, but, and then just the number of curb cuts on Oster on that short span is a concern of mine. Still inclined maybe to approve it, I just, you know.
I, I, unfortunately, I took the liberty of, of drawing, trying to draw the lot lines on there where I could see the lot sizes relative to the adjacent lots. And in fact, a lot of the lots are larger than the immediately adjacent lots. There's a couple of lots in there, one immediately to the, to the west. I'm not sure how that ever came to be that small, but most of the lots are at, at least as large, in some cases, if not larger. You know, the, the long skinny lot, and there was some discussion about that one, but there's a similar lot, you know, almost immediately adjacent to it. So the lot size, I think they did keep, keep them, although their regular shapes, the, the overall square footage is comparable to some of the surrounding lots or the immediately adjacent lots.
I agree with that, but if we're gonna limit Lot One to not be subdivided again, what's the purpose of adding its own curb cut? Why can it not share curb cut with the other lots that are subdivided? Also places a tiny little road and it does seem like it would alleviate some of the neighbors' concerns.
Yeah, I, I had a similar thought, just potentially just going back to the original comments on the curb cuts.
I'll amend my motion to, to remove that, but lots one, five and six share a common, common drive.
Question for staff. I think it came up with the private, I guess, driveway and that being emergency access. There's, how is that handled? I mean, with parking and boats and all sorts of things?
It's pretty much self policing. I mean, there, there's not any way that the city can regulate, enforce, be out there every day.
I'll amend my second on Nick's motion.
Properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number five, thirty-five thirty-five Spring Hill Avenue.
Move for approval, subject to staff recommendations. Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number six, one fifty-seven South Cedar Street, recommended for approval. Is there a motion?
Move to approve, based on staff recommendations. Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Item number seven, east side of Dykes Road, recommended for approval.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number eight, nine fifty-six and nine fifty-eight South Broad Street, recommended for tentative approval. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Item number nine, North Terminus Georgian Drive, recommended for tentative approval. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Just want to make sure y'all were aware, there were some emails from some of the doctors.
They withdrew those, those complaints.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? New planning approval applications. Item number ten, two hundred Dolphin Street, recommended for approval. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. New planned unit developments. Item number eleven, forty-seven twenty-five Moffett Road, it's recommended for approval.
I have a question for staff. The, or for Mr. Anderson. No one was here to represent the applicant, so they want anybody here to indicate agreement with the recommendations. Do we assume they're in agreement with the recommendations or?
Keep it approved without the name.
Okay. Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. New group applications. Item number twelve, area bounded by Foxtail Drive, taking both parts at one, as one. Both are recommended for approval. Is there a motion?
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendation.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number thirteen, six eighty Azalea Road, it's recommended for holdover till January eighteenth. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Item number fourteen, sixty fifty White Bark Drive. Again, it's recommended for holdover until January fourth meeting. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there any other business?
I believe I mentioned at the last meeting, the business meeting, January twenty-fifth, where the consultant for the zoning rewrite will make a presentation to y'all. We'll send you a reminder as we get closer, but my forgetful mind, I wanted to do it again. And the only other thing I have is to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas to you as well.